Good evening. I'd like to call our school committee meeting to order. It is Thursday, January 18th. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV TV and by Jamie Wixton. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move a few agenda items around tonight. We're going to start with a quick public participation. Does anyone wish to address the committee? Seeing no one, we'll go on to good news. Anyone who'd like to share some good news? Brennan?
I might have the numbers wrong, but I believe that the recent DECA competition, I want to say that of the 24 students that went, 22 moved on to state competition. For the DECA, representing as usual for Wareham. Very proud to hear that. As a former DECA student myself.
And I just wanted to mention the Wareham Boys Basketball Team is ranked number one in the power rankings in the state, number six overall if you combined all divisions. And they beat a tough Childstown team last week at Emmanuel College. And they play our arch-rival, Old Rochester, tonight, which is why we're going to have Ed Rodrick go next to present the fall sports report so we can get over to the game.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Fall sports, we're in a new conference and beneficial to some of our teams, for sure. Football ended up doing pretty well. Volleyball did well. And boys' soccer didn't do as well, but in a sense, they did. The scores were more competitive. It was a much more competitive situation for us. And the winter, we're off to a pretty good start in our sports, so I'm very happy about that. A.J. Loes was MVP of the football conference. Marlon Florino was MVP of the volleyball with the conference. The cheerleaders actually went into a competition there and they won their competition, which was nice. So overall, it was, I thought it was a successful fall season.
So would you say it was beneficial in a competitive sense to be in a league?
Competitiveness, absolutely. Yes, it is. And it's different than obviously the conference we're coming from, but it was competitive for a lot of our sports teams.
Does anyone have any questions for Ed?
Yes.
Did you find that, like, what would you think the biggest challenge is of having the first season? Do you think it's just like of getting acclimated to the changes from one conference to another? Or do you think it's like the ebb and flow of certain graduating classes? Like the majority of seniors versus eighth and underclassmen?
Well, yeah. In that respect, like, for an example, some of our teams, like our girls' basketball team, even if they would have been in the other conference this year, would have won games. They would have won games. So a lot has to do with sometimes who your talent is, your talent has, and who you're playing. But overall, it's been beneficial, especially for the soccers who've struggled for years. They weren't as strong. Boys' soccer, if they had had their strong team a few years ago, they would have done extremely well this past season. So I think it's good. It's good for most of our teams. Like, boys' basketball isn't in the conference. It wouldn't be very good for them to be in the conference. But I think most of our other teams, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Brennan?
Hate to be, you know, go on a down note, but considering the budget that we've all seen and, you know, the cuts that are going to have to be made, do you anticipate any, or do you think that maybe there would be any sports that we should cut from the roster? Or, I mean, is that kind of too early to tell? Is, you know?
I hope not. I mean, we don't have as many sports as some other schools already. And I really don't. I'm looking at the sports that we have. Jeez, I hope not. I mean, I think it's...
Me too. I mean...
The enrollment and the participation, let's put it that way, is up. Our track team has two buses for away games now, away meets, which that's never happened since I've been here. And I think overall, the teams are getting more participants. Maybe it is because they will become a little bit more successful than in the past. I'm not sure if that's the real reason, but, like, please, I hope you don't do that.
I mean, I, looking at and seeing that they have their own fundraising, I mean, obvious, I'm a big fan of sports. I'm a former athlete at Wareham myself. So, I mean, I don't want to see it, but I didn't know if, seeing, you know, some of the results and with the participation, if it was up or down, just in your estimation, if there was anything that if we had to, we could live without.
We've already cut a handful of sports over the years. Golf, we've cut cross-country. Cross-country, boys' volleyball. I mean, we could go on and on.
I wasn't aware of that.
We're really kind of at a point where I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room as far as programs.
Well, that's kind of good to hear.
Well, good and bad, because once you cut them, they never come back.
Joyce, and then April?
I just want to say, I'm happy to hear you say, for instance, the boys are playing at OR tonight. And football team still played Bourn. Even though we made the conference switch, those types of games are still happening.
We play Bourn in most sports, and we play OR Rochester in the sports we're competitive with. We made an agreement, not an agreement, but we've talked, we want to continue that, especially Bourn and an OR. Those are the two we tried to make.
Short bus rides.
Save on gas.
Save on the money.
And South Coast Conference, in many respects, when I call them and all that stuff, we're still very friendly and everything. We try to arrange games when we can. My whole goal is that they'll be competitive, you know? If the team's not strong, fine. If the team's really good, it's not. Like, boys' basketball, we play Bourn and Old Rochester, you know? And it should be a lot of fun. Both games should be great. Old Rochester this week, Bourn's undefeated, and they're coming to our place next week. So it'll be, it'll be really good.
And as far as the expenses go, are they where you expected them to be? Was there anything that was out of whack?
Yeah, it's not, it's not much of a difference. There are some, there's different ways to go to these places than before. That's what we're trying to navigate, the time and all that stuff. But I don't, I don't think it's much of a difference in price from what we're doing.
The transportation is more, because we're traveling further away for these meets and games.
So some of the times, like today, there was a basketball game at 3:30. The track meets are at 3:00 instead of at night. Does that change the expense, or is it the same?
It takes away from some of the learning, because they have to be dismissed.
They're leaving earlier, yeah.
Well, track is at Wheaton College. We used to have it in Beffet Volk. And the facility is night and day from Beffet Volk.
Right.
Coach loves it.
I've heard it's great, yeah.
And they'd have their meets in the afternoon, which in some respects is good, and in some respects it's bad. It's good in that the students will be home early, instead of coming home at 9:00, 9:30, whatever it may be. That being said, the track team has to get dismissed from school at 1:45, 1:30, 1:45 with the athletes, which is usually once a week. And then they have a lot of weekends when it doesn't matter.
Right, right. Okay.
April?
I just have two more questions. So do you believe, or do you feel, that the, I know several years ago, we waived the user fees for athletics. Do you think that the increase in participation is due to that? Or do you think that that plays a significant role?
I do.
Yeah?
I do, because it would, you know, the basketball kids are going to play no matter what. The football kids, for the most part, are going to play no matter what. But in your sports, that don't have a feeder program, you know, as one former coach said to me one time, he said, "Why would a kid pay money to run around in circles?" That was Mr. Howlett, by the way. And, you know, if it's, if they're not entrenched in the program, those kind of fringe programs are the ones where you wouldn't have kids come out, because why am I going to pay $125 for a sport I've never played and I don't really know how to play? What happened, what we saw this year was we had athletes that were playing two and three sports, where before, everyone was very specialized. And I really believe if we had user fees, those kids, Ed, you saw it, wouldn't have come out and extended themselves. And we had a kid, and this is spring track, play, we had multiple kids from the basketball teams that went out and ran spring track.
They did great.
And we had multiple kids that qualified for states at their first meet in the cold in the month of, you know, April. And I'm convinced those type of kids wouldn't have extended themselves because of the cost that would be incurred by the family. And I know, you know, $100, $125 doesn't seem like a lot, but to a family that's living paycheck to paycheck, that's money they don't have.
That's a great point. And you mentioned the feeder program, which leads to my next question. I know that the Tigers program in town has now introducing a feeder wrestling program. And I know that that's something that we don't, we haven't had since my, with Dylan being a recent graduate, like, had in that time. And I know that we had had, at one point, a very robust sort of hockey participation and, you know, when we were with Carver. And now it's like three different towns, regionalized. And do we still have a lot of kids that are? I think at one point, we had one kid doing wrestling at Carver, I want to say.
Right. We had an agreement with Carver. And it's tough. Again, it has to be a kid that's really involved to be that committed, because they're going to practice, they have to travel from Wareham High School to practice in Carver to come back home. All the matches are there at home, or they have to go there to catch a bus. I'm excited. I spoke with Jamie Sylvia a few times on this. I think that is the sport, that if we ever could bring another sport into the school, that would be the sport. Because I think in the winter, when you'll see, when we do our winters, the numbers go down in the winter. The athletes are still there. It's just you're either a basketball player, or running track, or doing cheerleading. Those are the three real options. Hockey is a very specialized sport. You have to have played it for multiple years to be doing it. And wrestling, you really have to be dedicated to travel. You know, I know it's not far to Carver High School, but there's an effort there of 30-minute drive each way. So I'm excited to see, in the future, us potentially coming in front of you and asking to bring wrestling in to the high school. Obviously, it's a few years away. We're excited to see what the Tigers do. They've got a lot of kids involved in it, so it's very exciting. And eventually, they'll be at the high school age where they'll want to continue on with the sport. So hopefully, in a few years, we'll be in a position to add that on. And we'll have to figure out how we're going to divide up that gym.
And do we have the numbers of how many students are currently participating in hockey from our school?
Two.
Wow, that's so, that's gone down so much.
Carver has pretty much the same, maybe a little bit.
I think they've got four.
It's not much very different.
Yeah.
And at one time, not long ago, and I've talked to the hockey people about it. Mr. Paladino's a hockey person, so he knows better than I. But they say there's not a lot of young Wareham kids playing. You know, I don't, why, I don't know, but I mean, so...
Well, the Gateway hockey program, you know, Ben Hathaway, the late Ben Hathaway ran it. And once he stopped running it, there was just, there was not a feeder program. And it's not a sport like football, track, where you can come in freshman year or eighth grade year and be an all-star by the time you're a senior. You really, it's a specialized sport.
Oh, I know it well, but, all right. Thank you very much.
And that, Mr. Paladino said, I, pardon me off the top of my head what you said there, but what he makes sense is that the diehard kids in that sport will play, there's a user fee. The other kids, they will not. And that's maybe, that is a good point, why we do have a benefit. The enrollment has gone up in some of our sports.
And so many kids were on waivers. It really didn't bring in a lot of, a lot of money on the user fee end.
Mr. Sweat, do you have a couple of questions?
First, a thank you and a compliment. This is not, Mayflower made Ed's job that much bigger. I've already seen my tennis schedule. I've got 18 matches set. Only three of them are related to last year's South Coast Conference. So thank you, Ed. I know it's a big job. I can't believe I haven't asked this question before, over all the years, but how is it determined how many coaches a sport gets? Because it doesn't seem related to the number of participants.
Well, in other words, it's all been, ahead of time, it's all been we had a JV coach, varsity coach, freshman. It's kind of changed recently, because we don't have all those teams. So for example, the spring coming up, if we don't have a JV baseball team, we're not going to have a JV coach in softball. But in the past, we've tried to keep them on.
But I'm reacting to the dollars, not as a coach. I'm reacting to the dollars, and that greatly impacts the cost per participant.
Wait, he's looking at the wrong report.
No, which one are you looking at?
Yeah. You've got to look at the one he handed to you, the number.
It's the one that I screwed up on, and not this one is correct. Yeah. Now that's more realistic. Those coaches would be happy if they were getting that. Believe me when I tell you.
Okay, maybe I'll withdraw my question.
It was a $20,000 mistake. Let's put it that way.
Okay. But my question stands, but it's obviously less relevant with the different numbers. So some of its history is the bottom line. But history is not dictating it anymore.
No, we're trying, we're trying to do the right things.
Every dollar counts.
We try to meet and, you know, as long as there's no safety problems involved with eliminating a coach, then if there's not, the numbers aren't there, the numbers aren't there, you know? So we're going to try and do that.
We've given the coaches the heads up. If there's not a JV program, there's not a JV coach. And they know that, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodrick. So you can go over to see the game. Wareham's up 16 to 9, by the way. Wareham's up 16 to 9.
All right. Go Vikings!
Elise is smiling.
All right. Even though I know, Dr. Francos, you probably enjoy sitting at school committee meetings again here, I'm going to move you up on the agenda. And you're going to speak next to the International Baccalaureate Report. So, Dr. Francos, welcome. And the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. It's nice to see you all and to meet you, Brennan.
Thank you.
And to meet you, April.
Hi there. Sorry, we couldn't connect.
May I just, I just want to introduce you, if that's okay. May I do that? So, as you know, part of my goals was to have an evaluation of the IB program. And so, welcome to Elise Francos, who conducted that. Elise has been in education for 35 years. She's been a teacher, a building-level administrator, and a district-level administrator, most recently Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction for the Old Rochester Regional School District. Since retiring, she goes around the country, does workshops around literacy, and also conducts program evaluations. And so here she is. So, welcome, Elise.
I would just, just before Dr. Francos starts, I just want to make it clear that we're not voting on anything this evening regarding the IB program. We're listening to the report by Dr. Francos. I'll give us about two minutes per member to ask questions or make any statements they'd like to make at that time. So we're not going to necessarily get into the weeds tonight of the report. And going forward, there will be either a working committee or a subcommittee that will look at the report more closely and come up with some recommendations. And then possibly even a workshop, school committee meeting, where this can be discussed further. So I just want to make that clear for this evening. Dr. Francos, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So just a little background on program evaluation. What it is, is it's a look at the performance of a program and the value of a program. And it's to assist and to help people make decisions down the road. So with that said, I want to talk a little bit about the methodology that I used. And so I had face-to-face interviews with five international baccalaureate teachers, six administrators, three school committee members in face-to-face method, and then one phone interview with a school committee member. I conducted seven IB class observations and saw instruction in action. And I had a delightful focus group with four middle school teachers and with eight international baccalaureate students. I engaged in document review, looking at a lot of the material that's put out from international baccalaureate organization, and then conducted finally a parent survey to find out what Wareham parents know about the IB program, which garnered 133 participants. So after that, this is the summary report. So just a little bit about IB. I started off my evaluation without knowing really anything about it whatsoever, but it's a pre-college and pre-university program. And according to IB International, it values learning, development of effective approaches to teaching, global connections, and the exploration of a significant content. And it's across multiple subject areas. One other interesting aspect of IB is it really prioritizes writing, which is a 21st century skill. And the IB diploma program requires a student to study in six different subject areas. And so a Wareham public school student can study IB in world language, foreign language, in art, in history, in English language arts, in science, and in mathematics. So the major subject areas. And then in addition to that, there are three core IB activities that have significant requirements. One is the TOK, or the Theory of Knowledge course. This is a two-year course. And it's really a kind of metacognitive course, where students explore, how do I know what I know? And then there's the CAS, which is the Creative Activity Service Project. It's a student-initiated project, taking 18 months. When I met with students, some of those projects were just absolutely fascinating. One student looked at the prison system. And this was something that was very near and dear and interesting to her. Looked at literature, interviewed people, conducted this during COVID. And so it was, did this, did so with the tutelage and advisory of a faculty member. And so it was a very safe project, but interesting project, highly personalized, and had her own findings. Another student looked into feminine hygiene products and how difficult they are to obtain on school campuses and within the larger community. And then looked into promoting that, wrote articles about it, and then figured out ways to make those products more accessible to students and individuals within the community, and then made that happen. So these are the kinds of projects that are part of the CAS. And then finally, the EE, another acronym, but it's the Extended Essay. And this is where writing is very prioritized in the IB program. Students are assessed with the Extended Essay. And this is assessed from outside scorers, and it gives the teacher the difference between their predicted and actual scores. So if I'm an IB English teacher, I'll predict what my student will earn on their Extended Essay. And this is on a topic that is something that is very interesting to the student. I met some students in IB art. And one student is looking at art from three different art periods, and then looking at how vanity is portrayed in that art from those three periods. And he's doing a long Extended Essay about that. So very interesting projects. And so in a lot of the classes that I observed, the teacher would say, "So tonight, there won't be sort of a formalized homework, but you're going to be working on your Extended Essay." And students have the independent motivation to do that. So how do you get your IB diploma? Sorry about the small type here. But basically, you take six courses in those major subject areas. And so the diploma program is based on three high-level courses and three standard-level courses. And then you need to earn the requisite scores in those courses. And those courses are spread over your junior year and your senior year in high school. So three standard, three HL or high-level courses, plus your community, your creative community project equals the IB diploma, provided you earn the requisite scores on all of your courses. So seven would be a really good score in an IB class assessment. And attaining a 45 would be a perfect score. So if we take the six courses times seven, that might equal 42. That's pretty high level for that kid. And a little bit lower down on this slide, and I know it's hard to see, but to get into a selective college with your total IB scores, you need a minimum of 40. That's adding up all your scores from your various classes. Depending on your score, let's say it's Yale or Harvard, you'd need a 38 to 43 points on your IB diplomas. And the, in terms of college admissions at those selective schools, they're really looking at high-level scores. So candidates for the, for high-level or selective programs need to get a six or a seven in each HL subject. I know it's a lot to take in all at once. So when we look at program evaluation, especially if you go to curriculum school, as I did, that was really something that I was passionate about implementing curriculum programs, which is what Dr. Schwam does. And so these are the seven drivers that we look for to make something work when we're doing a curriculum adoption. One is the careful selection of those that are implementing a new program. And it needs to be collaborative, lots of voices, and who's going to really put this program into action. Then we need effective pre-service training. And we need ongoing coaching and support for those that are putting a program into action. We need to evaluate the implementation using numeric and evaluative or affective kinds of data tools, monitor the progress, and then put an intervention if things are going awry or things are kind of off the trained track. And then finally, program evaluation, which is where we are now. I've conducted this program evaluation to see how things are going. So it's kind of a pulse of any curriculum program. And those are the seven drivers that we look for. All right. So what I found were some of the contextual hindrances or some of the kind of things that could make the program go off the track are things that often can happen. And one of them is COVID. COVID was a significant epidemic across all of our schools, across all of our country. And that really interrupted face-to-face instruction. Kids had to go online. That face-to-face or personal touch that one would have in the classroom was interrupted. And that was something that happened here. So if we look at the number of diplomas that were earned in 2020, we remember back to that tough time period. COVID happened around February, March of 2020. There were no diplomas earned in the graduating class of 2020. And that was due to all of those sorts of interruptions that can happen, the lack of personal touch. But then again, if you look at the number of diplomas in 2022, last spring, I believe there were seven. So this is a program where you need teacher support. So the variability of support, it has been a concern. Do we support IB? Do we not? Are we in full IB school, or are we not? The perception of that is varied, depending on who you talk to. And then anemic public messaging. Sometimes if we use tools to put or promote a program like, oh, just a flyer that goes home, well, I know from having kids that backpack delivery doesn't always work. Things can get squished to the bottom of a backpack. So you need public messaging about a program that is really going to use 21st century tools, social media. So there's also confusion among folks as to why we adopted the program in the first place, and then the realization at the middle school that if we don't have a middle school library or a world language program, why the middle years program or the NYPD cannot happen. So those were some of the obstacles to success. Interview findings. After interviewing all those stakeholders, these were the thoughts that I came up with in terms of 100 pages of testimony. I didn't have a guest access to the computer, so I narrated. I wrote down all of the different perspectives that folks gave me. And this is what I heard. They expressed that the training or the staff development was mixed and that there was very little opportunity for give-and-take, question-and-answer during the trainings that they had. They had hoped for curriculum to be given to them or models of curriculum to be given. They stated that there were none. They said it was challenging to quickly develop curriculum without models. Some lamented the loss of traditional AP classes, like AP Environmental or AP US History. A shift to IB courses, such as Global Politics, precluded AP US History. Or a science class subsumed AP Environmental. So that loss was felt by teachers who had previously had those classes. There was a wish among staff to observe other teachers, a feeling of, "I'm not sure if I'm an effective IB teacher. I sure wish I could see others in their practice." And a desire for timely IB data on how they were doing in their classes. So for example, if you're a math teacher, "How am I teaching quadratics? This is high-level stuff." "How am I teaching different processes in science, like photosynthesis?" I'd like data that would kind of drill down on the assessments as to, "How are my students doing on that particular topic? I wish I could get that data." A belief that Wareham could be on initiative overload. Too many things going on, and my head is spinning. And then lastly, the belief that course consolidation in math and science. There are some courses where it's designed by IB to teach the course over two years, but it's been compacted over one. And that sometimes IB course titles, so for example, it's not pre-calculus or it's not calculus, which is a traditional pathway, that sometimes these course names are boggling and they shortchange students in the college admissions process. So the master's schedule is challenging. IB courses are two years, not a one-and-done year, so that that makes the schedule, the master's schedule, challenging, and options are ruled out for students. Middle school teachers said they liked the curriculum documentation. And having been through that work before, to get a compliment from NIASK on curriculum documentation and using an effective template to gird that curriculum, the bones of the curriculum, huge compliment. And they loved making interdisciplinary connections and having their minds opened up to what... And they loved making interdisciplinary connections and having their minds opened up to what the possibilities were in curriculum, bringing science and math together, English Language Arts and History together. Realization that there are lots of acronyms and buzzwords, and right now, the focus in the middle school is literacy and numeracy. So they would like to continue the work that they did prior to 2020, prior to COVID, on that interdisciplinary work and get to know their high school colleagues, and continue that vertical articulation that was once started at that time, to create a staircase of complexity in each subject area and to rule out any replication of particular books or particular concepts to make sure there's a nice streamlined approach. School committee. All of you hold near and dear the future of Wareham students and the desire to engage and excite all students with high-level learning, whether it's AP, dual enrollment, or IB, or all of the above. Lots of desire to see students succeed, and that was a wonderful common ground to find. A desire to balance the budget with the three high-level programs, and an awareness that IB was implemented with the best of intentions for Wareham students, but a concern of, how do we balance all of the programs that we have, these advanced pathways, with our need for fiduciary responsibility? The administrator interviews were very mixed. There is a pilot that's happening in English Language Arts that has 20 students taught by two teachers, a regular English Language Arts teacher, as well as a special education co-teacher. 10 of the students in there have IEPs. 10 of the students are regular education students. And so here's a movement forward to make IB for all. And so some administrators feel that IB truly is for all, and then others feel that IB is not for all. So there was a difference there. A belief that it's a first-class program, a Cadillac for our kids, so why wouldn't we want them to drive that Cadillac? And then others believing that we need other kinds of professional development in trauma-sensitive education and differentiated instruction, and that too much focus on international baccalaureate is diverting our attention to IB away from what kids need. And then finally, that IB is not for all due to various factors. Students. It was a pleasure meeting with IB students. They have genuine excitement about the Community Action Service Project, the Theory of Knowledge Class, opportunities to write their extended essays on topics of their choice. The synthesis they do in writing is very exciting. They enjoy their small classes. They feel that their speaking, their presentation and listening skills have improved greatly, as well as their confidence, as a result of participating in IB classes. They enjoy the global connections and learning, and they believe that the IB messaging about the program is weak, and that they feel that they could be powerful and convincing messengers, as well as the IB teachers could be if that opportunity were tapped. And they believe that the IB opportunity reaches students too late. Some of the students told me that they learned about it at the end of the junior year, and it was too late to be a DP or Diploma Program person when you find out about it in the junior Parent perspectives. And in your larger report, you have all of the data with regard to the survey. So I asked parents, what do you know about IB, and would you encourage your student to enroll? And the student was, sorry, the survey was fielded or opened up online. It was a Survey Monkey tool from November 15th to the 1st of December, and 71% of the respondents had a high school student. And if we look at the data specifically to IB, let's see. Parents in general are not sure whether they would encourage their student to take an IB course. The students who said yes, and there were 32% of them, or 43 altogether, they mentioned that they would encourage their child to set high academic goals and broaden their horizons, and they recognized the benefit of having an internationally recognized diploma. And they felt that sometimes IB courses are the only upper-level course offered in that So summing up, IB weaknesses. I'm going to tell you what I found out if we put all of those different respondents or interviews, E's, together. And what they were is that teachers felt there was no curriculum or guidance to shape it. It were really not an IB-for-all district, that there are barriers to entry in the IB program as stated in the program of studies. You need a sending grade to get into an IB class, or you need a teacher initial, or you need a teacher recommendation. So we're not IB, that there are hurdles for students to jump to get into IB classes. They felt that there's a mixed message, or at least teachers felt that we hear data, our data in our classes is not important, yet we know that for a kid to earn his diploma, data is important. So it's a mixed message. They felt that very few diploma students graduate each year, and so are we getting bang for the buck out of this particular program, and that there's an opportunity cost in the program. So that if students or teachers are diverted for this kind of training, what's the training that they're missing out on? If we're spending money on these curriculum materials, how could those monies be spent on other curriculum materials? And then we have the dues to IB International, which is about $4,000 a year. In terms of strengths, it's the focus on learning and metacognition that folks talked about. The fact that sometimes when you have a teacher for two years in a row, at the elementary level, we call that looping, which leads to great personalization. If it takes me a long time to get to know Mr. Brigholi first year and what his standards are in a class, if I have him in the second year, why all of that, the personal rules of the road, if you will, are getting to know Mr. Brigholi as my teacher, it's taken care of. By the second year, we get right to learning rather than that relationship building. And then IB classes foster global connections, and of course, the use of the IB template, which was used and lauded by the NIESC organization. Continuing on with strengths and weaknesses. The trainings were lackluster. IB math disrupts the advanced math pathway, especially for a kid who's doing pre-engineering or pre-med. Typically, that pathway is Algebra I, grade eight, Honors Geometry, grade nine, Algebra II. Next, junior year is pre-calc, senior year is calculus. The names for the classes are a little bit mixed up in the IB program, and the topics that you would need to master calculus are not there according to the math program. So it really mucks up the program for mathematics for an advanced-level person. It also alters the program for somebody who wants that human background, say, in advanced statistics. So it was not something that was felt to behoove the student for advanced mathematics. Again, the summer data that's received doesn't inform instruction, so that I might learn, if I'm teaching poetry, how to get better at teaching poetry, or what section of my students did poorly on that part of my English Language Arts test. We don't have a pre-IB or middle-years program to start to foster IB. Talked about feeder programs earlier tonight for athletics. We need feeder programs for most high-level academic programs as well. And without an NYPD program where kids learn the acronyms and the language and the rhetoric of IB, we're not creating that feeder program. Scheduling is complicating. Mr. Palladino told me that it takes creative, interesting scheduling, because you've got those three required high-level courses, and they're two years. Eliminating other opportunities and choices for courses. I heard about one student who wanted to take AP Psych, but it was offered against high-level mathematics. Her second year, the AP Psych was precluded, so she didn't get to do that. So sometimes that schedule complication is a problem, and the teachers hear about that. And lastly, there's a vague understanding of knowledge of this IB program. 63 out of 133 parents of high school kids had not heard of it at all, and that came out in the survey. But IB prioritizes writing, a 21st century skill. IB teachers present various sides of issues. Kids told me that if they're hearing about something going on in the Middle East or about in Iran, they're also hearing news sources to get both sides of particular issues. IB students enjoy their small classes and the opportunity to present, and they enjoy that personalization. And IB has strong branding in Europe. So I thought I would present you with just three options, and of course, you're going to come up with your own, but these are ideas as an evaluator that I have, and of course, then will open up to questions. So your three options for action. One would be to retain IB as it is, but open the doors a little more widely to different kinds of kids. And you've done that this fall with the pilot program in English Language Arts. Promote the program using more social media, not just Parents Night, not just the program of studies, but with other tools that are going to reach and teach more parents and more students. Create exciting Parents Nights in which the IB teachers and the IB students speak. Use videotaping to take snippets of classes to showcase that learning. Monitor and measure progress with benchmarks that you all set. Create collaborative teacher forums for problem-solving, so that if I have an IB student and you have an IB student, and he or she may be struggling, how do we work on supporting that particular student? And create that IB pathway and understanding of IB skills for teachers in grades eight and nine, because grade eight is captive now at the high school, not captive, but located at. And so IB teachers could learn what are the requisite skills that kids need to succeed in IB, and they could learn them in grade eight and grade nine. Option two, phase it out. That would be a one-year phase out, because in your program of studies, you would need to ensure that your current diploma students attain their diploma by offering just the second year of what they've started. So that means that the kids who are currently in the junior class get to take the second year to complete their diploma program. Celebrate the gains of this program verbally and using media as well. Streamline your master schedule by offering AP and the dual enrollment, which parents knew a lot about, according to the data that I kind of flew by. But shift your messaging about advanced pathways at Wareham High School to advanced placement and to dual, excuse me, dual enrollment. Create that pre-AP pathway in grades eight and nine, and explore AP Capstone, which is going to incorporate the best of the IB program, which means global connections, writing, and presentation, and community service, and community presentation skills. Finally, option three. It's a one-year reset, which would allow you to postpone any decision-making about IB, but to implement some improvements. And these are improvements that I've already mentioned, but one of them is to shift the IB leadership to the high school building. And that would mean that it is overseen by current IB teachers who are stipended to provide some mentoring and guidance. Setting specific measurable benchmarks for what means IB success for you all. Ensure your teachers get coaching from content area people. Enhance your messaging. Eliminate barriers in your program of studies and thinking outside of traditional IB students. Encourage, recruit, excite. And then survey, using the free Survey Monkey tool. Parents, teachers, and students next fall to evaluate progress. Evaluate your IB markers that you have set, and recommend an action one year from now.
Take a breath. I mean, I just want to thank you for the comprehensive report and the background information, putting things in context, and looking at all sides with a lot of different constituents. I do want to remind the committee that we're going to keep the questions kind of brief here, but who would like to begin questioning? April?
So I don't necessarily have a question. I think you, you know, I know you and I weren't able to connect. Our schedules just didn't align for me to be able to give you any of my insight. I had a student just graduate from Wareham High School 2023, and he was enrolled in, at one point, in an AP class. He did two years of IB math and IB English. He was on a 504 plan. He is on the autism spectrum. He was also a student athlete. And I asked him candidly, because he's home on college break right now, he's a freshman at Montserrat College of Art, and I asked him his thoughts on the IB classes that he took at Wareham, and in comparison to some of the other classes that he took at Wareham. And in his opinion, and he is the type of kid that he needed a lot of guidance from his teachers, his executive functioning was not his strong suit, so doing things that motivated him to do them outside of the classroom was a struggle his entire school career. And he felt, for him, that IB helped, his IB classes that he took were more in line with the classes he's currently taking in college, and he felt more prepared for those classes after having taken IB. He did one year of AP, and for him, that structure was too rigid. And although it's great for those students that have that drive and can perform that way, even though they do have the intelligence, I do feel that, I know that the school has done a lot of work, and IB's sort of been sort of this like controversial or touchstone because it, right now, is such a small population that has been involved in it. But as a parent who's seen the benefit for my own child, and knowing the work, and I know that the cost, we've already invested so much in the program and in what it believes, and one of the top schools in the state, albeit a charter school, is an IB-for-all school. And if we have the makings, the foundation, to allow this sort of out-of-the-box, free-thinking, stimulating students to engage in things that are passionate to them and tying it back into their learning, that is 21st century learning, in my opinion. And I think it would be a shame to not take some of the improvements or the information that you provided, and I think, under the guise of anonymity, people feel safer, you know, to an impartial person, to say how they really feel. And I liked the input that you had from parents, from administrators, from teachers. I do think that there is room for knowledge and improvement, and engaging families is the biggest part of it. I know I went to IB night when my son was in eighth grade to learn about it. There weren't many parents there. And I'll be honest, there was maybe 25 parents of that graduating class at that event. So I do think there are opportunities for communicating the benefits, and I hope that, you know, people, that that's not lost on people, that it is, I feel valuable. So thank you.
Thank you.
Brenna?
I want to say, nice to meet you, actually. We had a very long conversation.
Yes, we did.
I enjoyed it. I know you said that you hadn't, you know, you weren't familiar with IB beforehand, but if you were to give a grade to Wareham on how we've implemented the IB program, or on a scale of one to 10, I mean, is this a program that we could do significantly better on, and therefore would be far more worth it? I mean, you know, I'm a big fan of it, and my son's very excited for it, too. So, I mean, unfortunately, the budget is an issue, but I kind of feel like this is, based on, you know, the report and reading, and it was very thorough. Thank you so much. Could we do better? Would this be a better program if we did it better? I mean, is that the biggest kind of problem, in your opinion? That this is something we just, if we did it a little bit better, it would be far more successful?
Well, just in terms of numbers, and numbers do tell an interesting story. So one of the challenges is you've got a 91-student senior class, 78 students coming up in the junior class. Mr. Palladino, correct me if I'm wrong.
Sounds close.
Okay. So you have very few numbers, and you've got three terrific programs, AB, AP, IB, and dual enrollment. And they're competing, and they create a challenge for the schedule, big challenge. Having done Power School myself, because there are singletons like AP Psych, I described that. because there are singletons like AP Psych, I described that. But if it's up against another course you have to have to get your diploma, that comes off the table.
Unfortunately, that could happen in any second.
Yes, absolutely. So the schedule is a challenge. You've, so, and then there's also the cost. Whether it's $40,000 for an IB coordinator, $3,000 for IB International, and then you get your materials and your supplies. So the question, I guess, I'm going to divert it right back to you, is can you support a program that has a class size of three or eight? And having worked with school committees in the past, you have to kind of decide, what is our class size that we can support? You know, how many students does each teacher have in his or her caseload? So in some school districts where I've worked, we didn't support class sizes smaller than 20 for a class. So just because of budgetary cuts. So it comes down to sometimes numbers more than curriculum.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm saying with my question is, if we're currently, to kind of start without that, you know, if we're running our AP program and our dual enrollment program at an A level, but we're kind of doing our IB program at a C level. If we were doing our IB program at an A level, would we get more participation? I mean, you know, if we promoted it better? Because one of the things I noticed you saying is parents weren't very familiar with it, a lot of kids weren't sure. I mean, if we were running it at the same level that we're running the other two programs, we could probably see increased enrollment in it. And I mean, that's why I'm asking, is if we did it better, would it be, in your opinion, if, in your opinion, could we run it better? Is, I guess, the biggest question.
Yes, yes. You could. And you would really increase the class size, because you can't have a discussion with three. If you have one kid out with the flu, that's not a discussion, it's a conversation, right? And that's no fun. So you really want to have a more robust class size, because it's more lively and it's much more interesting. And so you need to open those doors, whether it's AP or IB. Open the doors, because your non-traditional student is probably very, well, we all have our gifts, but we open them at different times, right? Right. So oftentimes, your seemingly average kid may not be articulate, and he may have had, or she may have had, some behavioral issues in the past. But they can thrive in a course that's very interesting.
Engage them in a different way. And I just had one more question that, talked about the AP Capstone program. Is that the same as the Capstone pilot program that we were talking about?
So the AP Capstone is their version. College Board runs the AP program. It's their version of IB, probably less involved. So it involves presentation skills, communication skills. It involves students getting together to synthesize different subject areas, like social studies, English Language Arts, math, and science. And they together put a presentation forward, and they're scored on that.
I voted on a Capstone pilot program a few weeks ago. I just didn't, oh, it's a different thing? Okay. I just didn't know if they were the same one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Joyce or Jeff? Any questions? Joyce?
I guess I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for being here for your presentation. Thank you to our superintendent for, you know, putting this study together so quickly. It was part of your goals, and you made it happen very quickly. So thank you for that. I thought it was interesting, maybe it wasn't in this presentation, but in the report that we received, that so many at the high school were happy that this review was being done. And I was also happy to hear, you know, that, you know, they were happy to have their voices heard at the high school. And, you know, so thank you to all of you and all of whoever, you know, were very forthcoming. And that is very helpful to us, because that's something that we don't always get to hear. So I don't have any questions. I'll just, I mean, I do have questions, but not tonight. I'm looking forward to what the next steps would be. And I will say that, you know, I was interviewed, and I am one of the school committee members who wants to see at least a pause and an evaluation of the program before we move forward, for many, many reasons. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just so grateful to everybody for opening up your office doors to me and being so candid. And especially very, very grateful to the middle school teachers, the high school teachers, all the administrators, and all of you. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Jeff, I was going to see if Jeff had any questions first. Jeff?
Like Joyce, I have lots of questions. But I don't think they're appropriate to go to you. That's not an insult. As a matter of fact, I thought your presentation and the report, which I read every word of slowly to make sure I didn't miss anything, was excellent. It was also provocative. I thank the superintendent for making this happen. And I look forward to the next steps as well. Don't take this a question, but if you want to comment, you're more than welcome to do so. But first of all, I choose none of your three options. FYI.
That's fine.
Maybe FYI test well. And so I am really fortunate, because I get to coach wonderful kids. And we talk about things besides the sport. And one of the things we've been, we've been talking about is AI. And I tell them, and they seem to understand what I'm saying and seem to agree, although it makes them pause. I tell them, in the future, it's not going to matter what you know. It's going to matter what you do with what you know. And if I wanted to make sure that, I'm pretty sure that, any number of AI programs, I've got a button on my computer desktop at home that says, "Ask me anything," right? I'm pretty sure they could pass any AP test that was put in front of them. I am less sure that they could pass an IB exam. And that's what makes, to me, IB particularly valuable, because of its goals are a little different than AP. When I was in eighth grade, which is before most people in the room were born, I was asked to memorize and know the meaning of 100 words that ended in O-L-O-G-Y, biology, for example. Except there were 100 of them. And I did it. Did that make me smart? No, it did not make me smart. It just meant I had a good memory. There's a, when I talk to students about AP, having a really good memory is really important to being able to do well on an AP exam. When I used to hire people, I didn't, I wasn't really concerned with what they knew. I was really concerned with how well they could think and how well they could communicate. And so I admit to a bias about IB, but I have lots of concerns about, not IB as a concept, but how we have implemented it. And so that's why I look forward to getting feedback on the many questions that I've got. Thanks in part to your project and your work on behalf of Wareham Public Schools. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Dr. Frankos. Okay, so what I'm going to do is move one more item up a little bit. I see we have a request for a club, a pilot club. So it asks that we move that up in the agenda.
I would like to introduce Robbie Gavin here tonight. He's one of our students. And he has really spearheaded this club and has done a lot of groundwork to get us here tonight. So I want to turn it over to Robbie.
Hello, I am Robbie Gavin, and I want to propose a club for Wareham High School, an Anime, Manga, and Pokemon Club. We want to have a safe place for anime and manga fans to hang out, watch, and talk about anime. For anime club, we will watch anime and discuss other animes we've been watching or recommend animes to others. We want a place to play Pokemon and share Pokemon cards together. For Pokemon Club, we will play Pokemon games, trade and battle Pokemon cards, and watch the Pokemon television series. This club will meet Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. So far, we have 18 students interested in our club. This club is open to all students at Wareham High School, and everyone's ideas are welcome. We will publicize the club more if it is approved tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robbie. Appreciate that presentation. Very well done, and you're even wearing clothing that matches your anime club tonight.
Thank you.
Do you guys have an advisor potentially yet?
Robbie has scouted out all the staff and has a staff member in mind. I think you can share it. I think it's safe.
Yes, Mr. Woga.
Okay, great. Excellent. And how many people do you think might be interested?
So far, we have 18.
Great. Excellent. April?
I just want to applaud you for coming and for putting such a great presentation together. I know if my son was still enrolled in the school, manga and anime are things he's very passionate about. And I know a lot of the young kids now are very into it. And I hope that you guys have some great discussions, because there's definitely a lot of it out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brennan?
Only a small concern, and just because I'm anime and manga fan myself, is, what about the age appropriate? I'm assuming that would be age appropriate for high school level. Not going to have, because I know it can get pretty extreme in some of the Japanese manga. So as long as it is under those confines, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for spearheading a club. That's really good of you, man.
Mr. Swett?
So from Mr. Palladino, is this a substitute for another club?
Yes, we have multiple clubs that didn't run this year, and this will take the spot of one of those clubs.
Good. Thank you. And I confess, Robbie, I have no idea what anime is. I barely know what Pokemon is. So could you explain it a little bit?
Anime is basically just Japanese animation.
Japanese animation.
He has it right on his shirt. That's what it looks like.
That's what it looks like.
That's what Dylan's actually doing in college, is animation, because he wants to do anime.
Wow.
That's cool.
So is there United States animation?
There is.
Disney.
Not exactly what anime is.
So what's the difference? So, you know, a shameless plug. On Saturday night, the New Bedford Symphony Orchestra is doing a program of all music related to animated films. Okay, so what is the difference between an animated Disney film and Japanese animation?
Basically, just like the way it's animated, the technique they use.
The science of animation. I bet it's pretty sophisticated. Well, I, like my colleagues, am thrilled that you're here and appreciate what you've done and the excellent presentation.
So do we have a motion to accept this pilot club?
Seconded.
Oh, everyone jumping at the bit here. So first, April. Second, by Brennan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, I don't know where we are. Oh, Gisella, you finally get to go up here. I know we kept bumping you back. So we have this student report, and...
We miss you when you're not here.
And just so you know, Wareham is up 58 to 32 right now in the third quarter. So Wareham's up 58 to 32.
It was a close game the first time.
Gisella, thank you very much for coming tonight, and we're ready for your report.
Like normal, starting off with the clubs. During these last few weeks of school, newspaper has had their first article of the year come out. Chess Club has had its first meeting in months this last week, run by Mr. Emery. Film Club has moved its meetings to Mondays to allow more students to participate and is looking forward to picking their next movie of the year. National Honor Society is excited to start working on their next service project, where they will be collecting diapers, wipes, baby products, and gently-used children clothing. And that is due by this Friday, tomorrow. Key Club has, just excitedly, after a year and a half trying to get this up and running, but had a, worked with the elderly assisted living facility in Wareham at the All-American Assisted Living Facility, and had a bingo night with them. Key Club also, spearheading their mental health grant, just had their new signs put up in front of the counseling suite to bring more, the counseling suite and the guidance suite, to bring more visibility to the resources available at Wareham High School, and hopefully make change to help de-stigmatize getting mental health support. And then on more of an academic side, UMass Dartmouth is having their On the Spot Decision Day on the 26th. Bristol Community College is having theirs on February 6th. And last but not least, the first semester is coming to an end tomorrow on January 19th.
Thank you. Mr. Swett?
So I admit a bias, but I started a chess club when I was in seventh grade. And why has it been months since this chess club met?
From what I've heard, it was just, previously, the club had a lot of upperclassmen. So a lot of kids graduated. And also, the teacher who was running chess club is no longer teaching at the school. So there was also a change of leadership.
Yeah, it's a bad combination. I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions for Gisella?
Just a comment. You said that the Film Club had moved to Mondays so that more students could participate. I'm assuming that means that there's, you know, increased interest in it, and the club is doing really well?
Yeah, the club has been doing pretty well so far.
How many students would you estimate?
It depends. Previously, it just, they were getting less students because it was on Thursdays. But I would say at least around 12 to 15 students every meeting, so.
Just, what was it about Thursdays that?
There are other clubs that normally meet on Thursdays, and I think just there's more clubs.
Just scheduling. Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Gisella. All right. Next up, we have the district calendar, and this will require a vote.
Yes, in your packet, you have a copy of the draft 2024-2025 square calendar. This calendar follows a similar format that we've had. We have this year and last year and previous years. It has been vetted by our administrative team, and it has been shared with the union and approved and voted on by the union. So I ask for your approval of the calendar.
Mr. Swett, you had an amendment, maybe?
Yes, for the 16 days that correspond to the April vacation, could we just amend the description to be simply "April vacation"?
What are we looking at here?
To remove the wording for Good Friday?
Oh, I see.
There's another document that I'm sure Jamie's familiar with that also just says vacation, April vacation or school vacation.
Which is in our packet, yeah.
You want to remove Good Friday?
Yes.
Just make that part of April vacation.
Doesn't change the number of days.
Doesn't change anything.
Doesn't really change anything except the description.
I have no objection.
I second that.
Then I have a motion and a second.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the...
No, mine was the motion.
April seconded it. All right, so...
Can I ask a question before you?
I know the superintendent was dying to make a motion, because it's illegal, but he likes to, cutting edge or bleeding edge.
That's only to adjourn.
I just have a question. So you said the union voted on this and approved it. Did they vote, did they see both of these? Did they see the version that didn't have?
They saw both.
Because there's some mention of that holiday in some contract. I don't know which, is you nodding your head to me? So I just sort of, I mean, I'm fine with making that change. But I just want to make sure that it's not going to have effects on something else.
I don't anticipate it would. It doesn't change anything, only what is listed.
This is traditionally for like the public, this calendar, more than it is for the contract.
That would still be a day off, as has been in the past.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on Jeff's amendment, I guess? Or can we just vote in one fell swoop?
Motion to accept as amended.
We have a motion to approve the calendar as amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay, next up, also requiring a vote is the Wareham High School Program of Studies discussion.
Well, thanks for having us here tonight. We have Ms. Cannon, the Assistant Principal, Ms. Kavicki, the other Assistant Principal, Justin Skelly, who's in charge of math and foreign language and phys ed and health. We have Christine, who is our new Special Ed Department Head, Amy Dionne, who is Department Head for Science, Art, Fine Art, Business, Applied Arts, I think I said it all, and Mike Murray, who, as you know, is Humanities and JROTC. So we're here to present to you tonight our course of study changes, and some of them are very simple, some are a little more involved. I'm excited about the three new courses that we're offering, and I'll have the department heads kind of talk about those. But as we go through, you'll see some changes to some of our IB and AP language and some changes to phys ed. So we'll start with Personal Finance, and Amy, this is an honors-level course, and if you can just talk about that a little bit.
This is just to add to our current coursework, give students the opportunity that want to learn more in-depth and at an accelerated pace. So it is following along the same curriculum as Personal Finance, but it's just giving students who want to get into greater depth and, you know, accelerate how much they can get from that class, the opportunity.
And this is still a requirement for graduation, so this would cover the requirement if students wanted to take a higher level than the college prep.
Well, just to be clear, if they take the basic course, they meet the requirement for graduation?
Correct.
Okay, so this, and are they eligible to take the advanced course if they haven't taken the primary course?
Yes.
This would help with class rank, too, I'm assuming, or GPA?
Well, honors is weighted, right?
Right, right, okay.
So it's one or the other. It's not one and...
Right. The phys ed department, I think, has come up with a great plan for phys ed, and Mr. Skelly, if you can just talk about the reorganization of the classes.
Yeah, currently, we have our Grade Eight Phys Ed class running with our Grade Nine and Ten, so it's eight through ten together, you know, among several periods. And what we're proposing is to now shift the tenth grade to be with eleventh and twelfth grade. So we'll just have our Grade Eight and Grade Nine students together in phys ed class for a period, you know, several periods, and our Grade Ten, Eleven, and Twelve together in other periods. One of the reasons we, my department wanted to do this is because we noticed that our Grade Eight obviously has a larger class size, and we want to kind of shift the Ten up to be with the Eleven and Twelve to kind of make the class size a little bit more reasonable and manageable.
Jeff?
Do you have a reaction philosophy about the concept, and I certainly didn't create it, where you would waive the phys ed requirement if you were doing a sport?
State doesn't allow that. That ended in the eighties.
I know I'm old, but...
I didn't say you were old. I got credit for it, so...
It ended in the eighties. Interesting.
State doesn't allow it anymore.
Well, that answers that question. Thank you.
As my phys ed brother, teacher brother would say, "You're not fully educated until you're physically educated."
That sounds like David. Then moving on, excited about this because this was a student choice addition, introduction to poetry. Mr. Murray?
Yes, I was in the library during advisory, and four or five students came down to ask me if we could initiate a poetry class. It just so happened that I had been talking to one of the teach, one of the relatively newer teachers who does not yet teach an elective but has been with us for a couple of years, and asked her if she was interested in developing a class for, to be introduced tonight, actually. And she was interested in a poetry class. So those two, two things were a moment of serendipity, and here we are. It's going to be a class that's going to go over the genres of poetry, but also try to foster the students' own poetic talents as well.
I love that.
And when we surveyed the students, this was their number-three choice in the survey. So Student Advisory Council with Gisella, we surveyed all the students, and this came up as our third most popular request. So excited to be able to present that, and hopefully the students will sign up for it. Moving on, as you've heard me say before, unfortunately, we cut a science teacher a few years back, and it took away all of our computer science courses. I'm excited that Amy has found a way within the Science Department to extract one section to potentially offer our AP Science Principles. And so, Ms. Dionne, if you'd talk a little bit about that.
Sure. There is one science teacher who's interested in picking up the AP Computer Science Principles course. The prerequisite for that is only that students have successful completion of Algebra I, so it really opens the door, you know, for anyone, you know, out of, you know, sophomore and up to be able to take the course.
And one of the things that we struggled with, and we have been struggling with, is electives for eighth graders. And basically, as you remember, when the eighth graders came over, we received four core teachers and a foreign language teacher. So our electives were basically handled by our existing staff, and it gets real tight trying to schedule the eighth graders. So again, I'm excited that Amy has been able to extract at least one period to conduct an introductory to woodworking class that could open the doors for future woodworking classes for these students, but just to kind of whet the palate and get them excited about woodworking. And Amy, I just want to give you a minute to talk about that.
Sure. Again, none of this comes without conversation with a teacher. You know, I vet things through the teachers and see if there's interest and if there's, you know, a vision that they can take over from my conversation with them. So Mr. Emery has decided that this is something that he would like to see, and we feel that when you're talking feeder programs, you know, intro to woodworking would only help build a more robust woodshop program for him after.
Mr. Swett?
Would this involve any capital purchases, equipment, or anything like that?
All in kind.
All in kind?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
So those are our major changes. Obviously, we have some minor ones. We would entertain any conversation or questions you may have.
I just want to say I'm really excited about the idea of the poetry class for students. I know that, you know, I was English, any English class I could take in high school and college, I took all of them, from poetry to Shakespeare to journalism to literature to, we even had a class called Individualized Popular Reading, where we literally just picked a book, and that's all you did was read whatever you wanted and wrote a book report. And that fed the book, the review side of the newspaper that I happen to be editor of. But the poetry class is great because I feel like so many of the things I read in high school, and my high school was seven through twelve, that I still remember were the poems that I read, you know. So I think that's a huge asset to kids, to be able to have that sort of, even that outlet, because I think students that might struggle with essay writing might be able to express themselves really well with poetry, and I think that's going to be a huge benefit to a lot of kids.
Thank you.
So I'm sure you heard Dr. Frango say that, did she work at a school system, or I can't remember exactly the phrase she used, where they didn't support a class with less than twenty. So my question to you is, what can we anticipate that number being at Wareham High School?
Not twenty.
Okay.
This, you know, if you said twenty, you'd have one AP and one IB class. So what we do is we try and set the goal for double digits. We want a minimum...
That's half, if my math is correct, of twenty.
Right. This, the school she's referring to was Wenham High School. I don't know if you're familiar with Wenham.
Doesn't mean anything to me.
Okay. So we try and get double digits. We want to have, you know, ideally, we want to have at least twenty, but the reality is, we try and get into double digits, you know, hopefully into the teens. Inevitably, what can happen is, you know, you start off with twelve, and then as the kids get involved in the school year, things change, and now you're sitting in a class of eight. And it's tough because those eight kids did all the summer work, and were prepared for the class, want the class. Some of them need it if they're getting an IB diploma, and for me to go in and say, "Well, sorry, guys, we didn't hit the threshold of ten, we're closing the class, and thank you for doing all that summer work." It's a difficult position to be in, but we try to be as efficient as possible. And one of the things that we did ten years ago, and I'm sorry to sound like a broken record to those that have been on School Committee for a while, is we changed our schedule, and we encouraged the teachers to approve the new schedule through the, through the union and negotiations, so that they would teach six out of eight classes instead of five out of eight, which I might add, oh, Rochester, that's their schedule. The teachers teach five out of eight. So the idea was, it would allow us to do a couple of things. One, to keep the class size low, and two, to be able to offer some advanced programs with smaller numbers, knowing that our teachers are stepping up and teaching that extra class. So I know when you look at it at face value, you know, you look at the numbers and say, "Well, why would we run that?" Well, that's the reason why we run that, is because we are teaching one more class than most schools in the area.
I'm one of those School Committee members who's heard that speech before.
I'm sorry.
Don't apologize. I consider to, lucky to be still sitting here. What would happen if you, if you said, instead of double digits, you said, pick a number, fifteen, and then if it slipped, it might slip to ten, or eleven, or twelve. But to start with ten and have it slip to six, or seven, or eight, means that by definition, you're going to have some percentage of your classes in single digits. So what's wrong with starting with a goal of fifteen and letting it drift down from fifteen instead of ten?
Yeah, I just hate to pigeonhole ourselves with a, with a number and then tell kids, "I'm sorry, you know, we didn't offer AP US History last year. We promised to offer it at least every other year, and because we only have ten kids and nine kids in the class, ten kids in the class, we didn't hit that threshold." I don't, I don't think it's in the students' best interest for us to set a hard and fast number. I am telling you that we do our best to try and get as many kids in there as possible. Now, the English classes, Mike, we're in the twenties. So, I mean, it, there is some fluctuation, but, you know, it's tough, too, with some of the courses that we need for the, you know, the IB diploma. We have to run those because they need that course to graduate. For instance, kids may be in year one this year, and year two is next year. You can't just say, "Sorry, we didn't hit fifteen. You guys have no shot now at a IB diploma."
I get that example, and that's a very specific example. But my, my problem is, and tell me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you will, that it does seem like the smaller class sizes also tend to be the class sizes that are AP, IB, honors, and so what we end up...
Special Ed.
Okay, but that's a very specific example. I'm not...
I understand.
Okay. So it does seem like the lower-achieving kids are more likely to be in the higher-class sizes. Is that a generalization that is fair?
I think we do, again, we, we spend over a thousand hours combined on the schedule.
I get that.
And I think we do a pretty good job of maintaining appropriate class size. We are always looking at the numbers, whether it be, is this number too high, and if so, how do we divide that class? What can we do? So I think if you look at our numbers, we're in pretty good shape with the current level of staff that we have. We can, you know, we look, we try to do eighth to ninth grades, we try and get them right around the twenties. Tenth grade, little higher, but not much higher. And then junior and senior, we like to have the classes, you know, in the mid twenties. I think we do a pretty good job of that. The tough part is, in a, in a school with six hundred kids, sometimes you have like a fluctuation. Like, we have a core math class that's a little bit higher than we would like, and, you know, we have, you know, a geometry class that's a little lower than we'd like. But we tried to do a great job in the spring of just, we ran the schedule a hundred times last year to try and get our numbers to where they need to be. It's, it's, again, I would love to run an elementary schedule. There's two hundred kids, you know, we're going to run twenty kids in each class, you know, it, this is a pretty dynamic process that we spend, and we start, it's kind of like the budget. We start in October, and we don't end till, you know, sometimes it's, we're in the summer working on it. So it's, it's something that we really, we take pride in it, and we do a lot to try and get the numbers to be the best that they can be for our students.
I don't think any, none of us doubt the work that goes into trying to make the schedule or the man-hours in it, but at the same time, I think you're probably hesitant to give a cutoff number because we don't have the bodies to be able to fill these two programs that can give you those numbers. We don't have it. It's just mathematically, it's not there. We don't have enough students in grades nine, ten, or eleven and twelve for sure. So like Language and Comp AP has nine students, Lit and Comp has eight, Language Acquisition IB Year One has fourteen, Year Two has nine. It's just the pie, it's the size of the pie, and so to try to fit the schedule, the ideal schedule that you want, and I get personalization, and I understand that the students like it, I really do, but when we're averaging about eight point three in AP and eight point four or eight point five in IB, I just don't know how sustainable that is. And I think that's what Jeff's getting at a little bit as well. So I don't know what the solution is.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to send a message, not to micromanage. I'll leave that to the superintendent and the rest of you with your very complex situation, but it has, it has multiple implications, both, as I said, which students get the higher classes, but also budget implications. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. April?
So I think maybe even just some of what you have said and some of what our previous presenter on the IB had said about, you know, the class size. Like, I think Dylan's graduating class was seventy-four, I think, at the end of the day, and you have more electives than a lot of other classes. So you divide that out besides your required core classes, which are naturally, because they're a state requirement, going to have a higher, like, class size, I would imagine, than some of like the more elected classes. But you divide seventy-four by those few classes, of course, your numbers are going to be really small. And we've, we've known that we have dwindling numbers in those upper eight, you know, halfway through ten, or eleventh and twelfth grade, just the last few years have been really small classes. And you have, like, say, a two hundred student eighth-grade class, and our goal has been to keep kids in the district. So by offering these things that they are leaving the district to go to get in other classes, it's sort of a double-edged sword, because if we remove those, then those students that we're trying to retain, now that we have the eighth grade in the high school, so that those numbers, by the time this eighth-grade class gets to junior and senior year, stay closer to that two hundred, where you have the opportunity to have bigger class sizes, I think is going to make a big difference. And I think, very similarly to what we've been doing at the elementary school, where all of the early interventions with literacy have been implemented, and now you guys are able to sort of track that and see that those numbers, as you followed that, you know, that group, you see that difference in that implement that it's making. But right now, that difference of the stuff we're doing for the elementary hasn't trickled to the high school because those kids were long past where that program started. So I think it's still, from my perspective, I graduated sixty-one kids. My high school was smaller than Wareham High School, believe it or not. The college that Dylan's at is smaller than Wareham High School. There's maybe four hundred kids in his entire college. And it's, I think it's a numbers thing, and by keeping the eighth grade there and having those opportunities, and I think it goes back to communicating, again, with the public, with the parents, letting them know what we have. Having former students that went through IB come back and talk to the kids, and, and talk to parents even, have a parent night. I know we have students come back that talk to the students, but high school kids don't talk to their parents. We all know that. It's pulling teeth to get information out of a high school student, middle school student. You ask them, "How was your day?" "Fine." "What'd you do?" "Stuff." "It was good." It's one-word answers. So I think by having, you know, these conversations is important, and having the options is important, but I think we also need to, to look at, we've done some huge structural changes with the way that our schools are divided, and I think we just still need to see through before we know for sure. we know for sure if that's what the problem is, if it's why those numbers are so low.
We haven't seen a 200-number class for eighth grade in a long time, a 200-student class. They're coming in like 160, 170.
Thanks.
So is there a motion up? I'm sorry, Joyce.
So, did you have a program tonight for eighth grade?
We did.
And how many parents came to that?
Not as many as we would have liked.
Right, I was afraid that was-
We do them all the time and we get, you know, slapped down for not doing enough of them. And, you know, we've had food, we've had no food, we've had hybrid, we've had in-person, we've had, you know, just online and through Zoom. It's tough. It's not unique to Wareham, so I feel okay about that. But, you know, we try and put our heart and soul into these presentations and, you know, then we're told, "Well, we're not publicizing things enough."
No, I know, and I've seen you all work hard over the years. I've seen many people work hard to put together these presentations, and it's really disappointing when people don't come. Yeah, because they can't-
I was there, it was an excellent presentation.
I'm sure it was, it always is, it always is.
And we'll post the, you know, we'll post the slideshow online. You know, some parents may not have been able to make it, we understand that.
Right, right.
So we'll post it, and we're always available through email or phone if there's questions.
All right. Well, I just do have a few other questions. Under the, on the first page of the changes, IB Business Management, it says that you're going to add in its place, each student is responsible for paying their fee. Do we not pay the testing fees?
We pay the majority of it. That was just to make sure the language was consistent with all the exam fees.
Okay.
But we, I mean, the price, it fluctuates a little bit, but it's very cheap for our kids to take any-
I thought so, I thought we at least-
Yes, we subsidize a large percentage of it.
Okay.
And if they're free or reduced, we subsidize just about the whole thing.
Okay. And so last year, at this presentation, we talked about the career pathways. And I know that's in process, and I know that there's been changes, and I know, but I know, and I can't wait to hear more about it.
And she will be back at some point when we get this thing rolling, Amy and myself will be there.
So, I should have done this, but I didn't look in the whole Course of Studies book, but there is a career pathway in there, is that true?
Correct.
Are there no students, though, enrolled in that?
Just, and I probably should have prefaced this, and this document has anything and everything we could run. The reality is, we can't run everything in here.
No, I understand that.
All right, I just-
So no, so my question was, at the time when we approved the pathways, there were some classes at the end of the pathway that we didn't even have offered yet.
Right, right.
So we don't have to talk about that because we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Is that true?
Correct.
That's just my question about that, okay. And not to bring up IB again, but I will say that we're approving this Course of Studies with IB intact in it without any changes, and that's okay. But I would just like to hear a little bit more from you or from the superintendent about what we're going to do going forward, because by approving the Course of Studies, that there's no, there's no changes to it.
Sure.
So I would like to have the school council for the high school read Elise's report. Perhaps they can, if this is videotaped, I think for WCTV, they can watch her report. And I would like to either bolster, I don't know the size of the school council, but I want to make sure there's adequate representation of all folks, teachers, administration, parents, community, that can speak to this and have that report vetted through school council. I think that's a perfect use of school council. I think that's a reason why they were put in place, that committee has put in place as an advisory to the principal, to look at things like this, the programming that we're offering in our schools. So I would like to have that committee put together, whether it's the school council or a hybrid of it, or a working group that's centered around school council, and have that group develop a recommendation for the principal on how they would like to go forward for the school.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ideally, using the rest of the school year to do that.
Okay.
And then, could that be presented to School Committee in a workshop meeting, perhaps?
Absolutely.
Okay. Jeff?
So, I understand the time pressure to get this approved, but I'm reluctant to simply have a yes vote. Perhaps, I, believe it or not, Joyce-
We're going to agree.
We're in somewhat of an agreement, that the status quo, which is not a reflection on any of you, okay, the status quo is not the right direction, okay? So I would like it possible that even if we approve it, it's conditioned upon having this additional work done and for us to have further input so that, this is a long amendment, so that, so that we could perhaps amend our approval based upon the feedback, stop laughing, Jamie. We could amend, amend our vote based upon the feedback and the decisions made that come out of this workshop or whatever we want to call it. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think it's a timing thing. So this is, the timing of this is really bad, because Scott clearly is, and his team has put a tremendous amount of work in this, and so we're kind of butting these up together. And we just don't have the time to do what we need to do with the information from this report to make any changes. He's got to get the work done in the school for the Program of Studies. So, I think it's going to take a little bit more time, is what I'm saying. It's going to take more time to vet this. And, you know, I was looking at my goals and I had, I had put, an IB task force is really the way it was worded in my goals. So really, this is a part of the goal. The next part is to have that group really look at the results of the evaluation and decide how they want to go forward.
But-
Or come up with a recommendation for how they want to go forward.
But you would agree that we're going to be buffeted, and that's a kind use of that word, by the budget process as well.
Absolutely.
So there's lots of things that could impact, unfortunately, the decision-making with regard to this. So this is just one more variable, as far as I'm concerned, which is really unfortunate.
You're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
April?
Scott had mentioned that this is just the courses that we are able to run, we don't necessarily have to run them. So I don't even know that we need your amendment, because just because they're there-
Jamie, you're trying to make Jamie happy, aren't you?
-doesn't mean that they're be utilized. But it's giving the options, should we be able to run them, whether that's class size or budgetary, is the way that I would understand them.
Right, correct.
If the budget is there, we can run it. If the budget is not there, we don't run it. If this class interest is there, we run it. If it's not, we don't run it. I think it just gives us a more comprehensive list of choices, whether or not, that's like any choice. You have a vending machine, all those other options stay in the machine if you pick the second one from the left on the top row. Everything else is still there if it's available.
I hear you, but I don't want my vote in the affirmative, which I will give, to be misconstrued as agreeing with the status quo. That's really all I'm saying.
Jeff?
I'm sorry, that's one.
I just wanted to say that the budget affects the Course of Studies every single year. It, so it changes, no matter what, depending upon the budget, no matter what's offered. So we're just sort of, this is the dream, like, these are the things we would love to have, and we also understand, they understand, how many of those courses that, for 10 years, have come and gone as a result of budget.
Okay. So your yes vote is not endorsing class sizes under 10 necessarily, but it is the information that's in the Program of Studies.
It's a wonderful Program of Studies.
All right, with that caveat, so I have a motion to accept the Program of Studies.
Motion.
Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, it's 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
What's the score?
90 to 47, final score.
Wow.
You're kidding.
Really?
90 to 47.
Wow.
That is a wow.
Good job, Wareham.
Take that, OR.
Wow.
Okay. So Kristen Flynn, our Director of Finance, is up next with a financial report and a budget transfer vote.
Yes, thank you. In your packet, you have the monthly reports for the month of December. Not much has changed since my last report with the budget. We do have some unspent funds in some of the salary accounts, and these are due to the positions that people have resigned mid-year or in the beginning of the year that have not been filled. So we do have some unspent funds there. So as we go through, and we have to patch holes for some deficits, that's an area that you'll likely be seeing some budget transfer requests from as we come to June 30th. Other areas that we have some unspent funds, I think I've discussed, are some of the tuitions, the out-of-district tuitions with some students who are, for whatever reason, are currently not in their placement, but we anticipate that at some point, whether it be this year or next year, that they will be. So that's been taken into account. So one of the things that we can do with that is, we also use Circuit Breaker for a lot of our tuitions for this year, and which we have done in the past. So one of the things that we could consider doing is using more of the LE, unspent LEA funds, the local budget funds, for those placements that students are not currently in, instead of using Circuit Breaker. And that would allow us to keep the Circuit Breaker funds, to have more to perhaps use for next year's budget, which is more of the problem than this year's budget, as we know. Some of the other sal-
Kristen, quick question on Circuit Breaker.
Yes.
There is a sped, I'm sorry, I misremember, a stabilization, a sped stabilization account.
That's correct.
At what point does funds that do not get spent in the Circuit Breaker account, is it appropriate to transfer them to the stabilization account?
The only, well, Circuit Breaker, you have to spend within a year. So there's a one-year carryover of Circuit Breaker. So you're really only living with what you've received in the recent past, and that you want to use that in anticipation of your next year's budget. So that would be the best practice. In terms of the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, what you could do is if you had more likely unspent funds in your local budget, you could try to transfer those, and that is through a town meeting vote. So that can, funds can only go into and come out of that Special Education Stabilization Fund by a vote of town meeting. So funds-
I forgot that part.
-go in, you know, at an annual town meeting or at a fall town meeting, and then in the, you know, and that would probably be your last, you know, your last trick in the bag is, you know, to go to that stabilization fund, and that would require a vote of the School Committee and, I believe, also of the Board of Selectmen.
But what you're recommending is that we use LEA funds rather than Circuit Breaker funds, which, and the Circuit Breaker funds only carry for a year-
For one year.
So would we be smarter to take unused LEA funds and put them in the stabilization fund?
Either, either/or would be good.
Can I just ask a question? Sorry to interrupt, but the source of the funds in the stabilization fund weren't from the school budget, they were from the town. So you're talking about taking funds from our budget and putting them in the stabilization fund, but when that $200,000 was put into the stabilization fund, that came from the town, not from the school budget. I could be wrong, but I am fairly certain that is the case.
I'm not willing to sit here and say you're wrong, but I'm-
Well, let me know tomorrow.
When you say, when you say it came from the town, they have to, it has to be approved by the town.
Approved by the town.
That doesn't mean the dollars came from the town.
I am fairly certain the dollars came from the town.
You may be right. But that's an interesting fact that I didn't remember, but it still comes down to, how do we make sure that we retain all the funds? Everybody wants a rainy day fund, you know? And the town has their own stabilization account, and it's nice that we have something as compared to giving it back at the end of the year. We should be so lucky.
So sometimes, I think to answer Joyce's question, and it's the same thing, what I've seen happen in the past is if there's unspent funds in the local school budget, it gets returned to the town with the agreement that at the next opportunity, the next town meeting, that those funds or a sum thereof would be placed into, voted into the stabilization account. In terms of Circuit Breaker, right now, Wareham is not at its max carryover, so we, you know, would not be, I think we're still in the phase that we can and should be building up Circuit Breaker for use in a budget year. So that's why I would recommend at this point in time to try to build up Circuit Breaker more for next year in anticipation of perhaps having to use it to balance the budget, so to speak. So, but that's, it's a little bit, you know, right now in January, premature to really decide on that. However, I just did want to mention that as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, especially where we do have, you know, unusual opportunity where we have some salary, unspent salary, some unspent special ed tuitions, and it really depends on, you know, how some of our other accounts, like transportation, that we've seen transfers into. And I'm sure we will see some more, because it's, we're getting made aware of students that we have to provide transportation services for, whether they be homeless or foster students, almost on a weekly basis. And we just, you know, sometimes it's slowed down over the past few weeks, but then all of a sudden, we'll get notified of some other students. So that's just something you just never know that we need to just be mindful of. The other accounts that, you know, that we continue to watch is the electricity account at Wareham Elementary. Right now, we have enough money, but I anticipate there will be some budget transfers to get us through to the end of the year. And those are two, transportation and electricity at Wareham Elementary, two of the salad, two of the budget lines that we increased in next year's budget because of what we've seen, not just for this year, but for last year as well. And one more, the budget transfer that I'm going to be talking about very shortly is for tutoring. So you'll see that I'm requesting to transfer some of that tuition funds that we have, that we know that is not currently being used into the home tutoring account. So that's another account that actually was increased in next year's budget as a result of what we've, what we've seen this year. That's all I really have in terms of the December update. I don't know if anybody has any other questions. So I'll move on to the budget transfer. So the budget transfer is requested from the Office of Student Services for home tutoring, special education, the home tutoring line, home and, and it's really home and hospital tutoring. It's for students to receive instruction when they are not able to attend school for whatever reason. In this case, there is one, the bulk of this $40,000 transfer is for a specialized online instruction, Lyndon Moot Bell instruction, that is needed for some, for one or some students. And then the rest of it is the, we took a look at what had been spent year-to-date for the home tutoring through the hospital tutoring and realized that we, in anticipation of having to get to June 30th, so while we were doing the transfer for the Lyndon Moot Bell instruction, we added a little bit for, to increase for the home and hospital tutoring. And that requires a vote, because we are transferring from one major account, a tuition, to another major account, an instruction line.
Any questions? Joyce?
I just have a question about the online instruction, is that a software program?
I believe so, I think so. It's, I don't know, I don't really know that much about it, but it is, it is a program that was recommended for at least one student that is meeting.
That was going to be my next question.
It's a special reading program, isn't it?
It's reading, yes.
It is reading, yeah.
It's similar to Wilson and those other companies that have a very specialized technique in helping students to get the skills that they need.
So it's possible that it's for, just for use for one student?
There's usually a teacher that's been trained to deliver it, and we don't have any teacher trained to deliver it. So I think this is the option that we have available to us.
Okay.
For that, for the need of the student in their IB.
It's just, $30,000 is allowed in. Okay.
Do we have a motion to accept the transfer?
I'm moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Dr. DeAndrea, you're up, superintendent's report.
Did we pass all the financial stuff, line item?
That's in his, oh, I'm sorry.
She asked if we had any questions.
I didn't realize she was asking questions about that. So I have a simple algorithm that I'm trying to use.
Didn't we go by this? Are we on the next agenda item already?
I have a simple algorithm, simple, I promise, and to try and look at the line item and get to the, to where there might be a problem without worrying about 50 bucks. So I looked at line items that- So I looked at line items that had $100,000 budget or more and were greater than 50% used, and unfortunately also encumbered. And there were a half a dozen or so. Is that an algorithm that makes sense to you? So if I see something that's a big number, 100,000 plus, and we've used 75% of it and we're only four months into the year, should I be worried about that?
The answer to that is, is yes and no. And I'll tell you why.
That's what I thought you'd say.
Because, for example, we're gonna take, we're taking into account a supply account, right? So you might have some curriculum supplies, classroom supplies, general supplies, custodial supplies. A lot of times you're buying those in, on July 1. So you're spending it and you're, you're buying that for use across, over the, the school year. You also may have some things that we, you know, we're encumbering for, we have, you know, a maintenance agreement. So even though we haven't gone through the year, we know we're going to have to spend that if it's a monthly thing. So even though we haven't used it, and also same, similar with utilities, even though we haven't used it yet, we're, we're encumbering it in anticipation of using it. And that's just so that we know that, you know, if I look at this and I say, hmm, I have a lot of money in this electricity account, but I'm not thinking at the time that it's only January and I haven't, you know, I haven't thought of February, March, April, May, and June. So that's, you know, that's to answer your, your yes and no.
All right. So in deference to the Chair, who's, who's already annoyed with me since I cut him off, from proceeding, I should say more accurately, but he's kind enough to let me continue. So when I see Superintendent's Office clerical salaries, 83%, okay? After four months, and nothing encumbered, that says to me, what's going on?
Right.
I don't necessarily want an answer to that question.
I do have an answer to that question.
Of course you do. But that's an example.
Right. So with that, with that, the way that we charged costs to the school lunch program changed between the time that we set the budget and, and now. So for example, when this time last year, or before this, when we were setting this year's budget back in, you know, the fall of last year, we were taking a portion of, a good chunk of a portion of a salary, a clerical salary in the business office, and that salary was charged straight away to the school lunch program, a separate, a separate fund. The Department of Ed came in, in the, over the winter and evaluated our programs and said, what you're doing is not the proper way to do that. So now we have to take an indirect cost. So now, and so the salary budgeted for that position was budgeted at, we'll say, 50%. But now every week, 100% is being charged to the local budget. DESI said, you can still recover those costs from the school lunch program, but you have to do it in a different manner through indirect costs. So you have to, every month, Mr. Russo calculates the indirect costs based on his expenses for the month and says, Kristen, here's what you can charge back to the school lunch program. And that's actually an indirect cost, and it's recommended to use utilities. So it's coming into the utility budget. So it's one of those-
I get it. You and I may be the only people who enjoy talking about this, so.
That's the explanation for that specific one.
My brain hurts.
I know, mine does too. It's, it's-
Do you ever have nightmares about the DESI acronym? Anyway, yeah, okay. So yes and no, and then I have to ask one generic question. Are you worried about anything in particular at this moment after four months?
I'm not, I'm worried about those budget lines that we talked about. Maybe the electricity, the transportation. However, I am, overall, I am not currently worried because I feel as though the unspent salaries and taking all of that into account.
I'm good.
It'll balance out at the end, so.
In Kristen, we trust, but Jeff verifies, so we're all good. Dr. DeAndrea?
All right.
You're up again.
Okay, so you have Superintendent's Newsletter in your packet, and first I ask that you approve the payroll and bill warrants as listed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, staying 5-0-0.
Thank you. Okay, so this is mid-year, believe it or not, mid-year. So it was way back in August that we set my goals, and it is time for just an update of where I am on my goals. So I gave you a one-page overview that I can just walk you through. One of my goals is, the first bullet is Skillful Teacher. Skillful Teacher, professional development training for teachers. What I would like to do is have any of our new teachers who are, do not have professional teacher status within their first years, first three years with us, is that they take the Skillful Teacher course. That is something that would, to make it a requirement, has to be negotiated with the union. It is, we are currently in negotiation, so that is something that has been proposed, and I'm hoping that we'll be successful with that. So that's ongoing. We are running the class now. The Assistant Superintendent has been working really hard in getting that program going and figuring out how we can do that. It is a regular graduate-level course, so it is, there's lots of extra time that teachers would need to attend. We have 15 participants currently in the class. So that's where we are with that. Empowering Writers is a writing program. It's for elementary grades. We had professional development last year. We had 13 teachers participate. It is really fully implemented this year at the elementary school. But we also have a program that's called Amplify, which is our literacy program. Amplify has a writing component that Empowering Writers can enhance. So teachers are kind of making Amplify this year, and I don't blame them as their priority. It's a new literacy program, and we want to make sure that they are adequately trained in that and get their, their questions answered as they learn that program. But we do also have the Empowering Writers Hub, which is an online component to Empowering Writers, which has professional development videos and also lessons that teachers can access. So really, the core piece of this goal is I really want to improve our writing in the elementary schools, and I, and I think that we're doing that. We're focusing on it, and I'm hopeful that we'll see some improvements in our writing due to that. IB Task Force, we've talked a lot about that tonight. We've talked, you have the report, and the next steps would be going to the school council or some sort of variation of that, a working group that would vet the, the report and talk about what next steps will be for the, for the school. And, and I think having it ultimately come back to you guys for a final look is, is a good idea. And perhaps a joint meeting between the school committee and the school council would do that. Attendance and Discipline, we continue to track that. You guys have asked for principals to report on that on a monthly basis, which they've been doing. Currently, based on those numbers, our students that are about 93.5% attendance rate and our staff, 95.8. That is an increase, at least for, for students. Last year, it was, we ended up at 92.5, which was exactly what the state attendance rate was. And we'll continue to monitor that. And discipline, we also are measuring through the climate data that we received and that we'll continue to measure, and also on discipline referrals.
Quick question. Do you, it's on the news, this attendance issue for kids. Chronic absenteeism, as compared to occasional days here and there, is what people are really focusing on. Do you know whether are, the percentage of our kids who are chronically absent, I guess that's, is that 10%, whatever it is?
Yeah, it's 18 days. Yeah, it's 10%.
Do you know whether the number of kids in Wareham Public Schools who are chronically absent is higher or lower or about the same as the state average?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that for you very quickly. We can-
I think that that would be interesting to report on.
Yeah, I can definitely make that part of the, the final report. Anxiety workshops, you know, with, with the increased mental health issues across the board with, with our students, and it's not just in Wareham, but across the state, country, I think is an important piece to focus on. Someone that I've worked for in one of my previous districts was Lynn Lyons, who's a terrific consultant for staff, professional development for staff, information for parents. She's very difficult to, to book because she's in such high demand. The Assistant Superintendent has been working really hard to figure out a date in which we can get her here. We had a date set last year, but we had to change the date because of MCAS testing, but right now we have her set for November 5th next year, which is Election Day. And so we have-
Everyone will need that.
We have professional development that day. And so we have her booked for that day. I'm looking forward to that, and I encourage you guys to come to the, one of the sessions. She's terrific, and you'll really be interested in what she, in what she has to say.
Elise used a phrase, and I had never seen it before, trauma sensitized instruction.
Sensitive.
Trauma sensitive? All right. Trauma sensitive instruction. Never heard that, that phrase before. Have you ever heard that phrase before?
I have, I have heard that phrase.
What does it mean?
The way I, I'm not an expert on it, so I'm not going to be able to, to speak to it well, but I, I think it's just understanding that, you know, when you're, when you're teaching students who have experienced trauma, being able to reach them and help them learn academically, understanding that they come with that trauma.
So they have, they have differentiated instruction, and then within differentiated instruction, they now have trauma-sensitive instruction. It's an easy job teaching, isn't it?
Yeah, right.
Good grief.
Special Education Time Analysis. Working with our Director of Student Support Services, she helped me to develop a survey that has gone out, went out at the beginning of the year. We received 58 responses. We sent it to 58 staff members, so how about that? 100% return. We got some really good information from that. I, in sending it out again, now that we're halfway through the year, I want to see if their answers or how much their answers change from the beginning of the year to now. And it really focuses on how, how much time they spend, really what I'm looking for is how much time are they spending in front of students as compared to in meetings or doing paperwork? I have some of that data, but I'm gonna save that for, for my final report.
Are you concerned about excessive delegation of two paras? In other words, the paras are doing a lot of the work and the, and the teachers are doing the paperwork instead of the student work?
ELA grade level expectations, our Assistant Superintendent has done a great job on putting that together. We actually have them all put together. I just need to dive into it myself and go through it and maybe put it in a different format or not, but we have them. They look great, and we'll, we'll share that with you in the final report. Climate goals, the principals have included a climate goal in each of their school improvement plans. They center around discipline, social, emotional learning, and attendance. So we're gonna continue, you know, it's obviously connected to the attendance and discipline I spoke to earlier. We'll continue to look at the climate data, discipline referrals, attendance rates. We'll also be looking at the, the data that the Department of Education collects. And finally, as the focus indicators, I've been kind of rounding around on this one, thinking that we should develop focus indicators as a district, but then I landed on that that's probably a bad idea. I asked the Assistant Superintendent to vet it through the Evaluation Subcommittee, which she did, and what came out of that is that it's probably best that the, the evaluator and, and the educator determine, you know, based on my job, my performance, what are the focus indicators that would be best for me to be focusing on? And, and so that's, and I think that really kind of landed where it should be. So that's where we are, you know, I'll, in, when is this? In April, we're all, end of March, I think I have to have my final report done. End of March where I get it out to-
Our report is the end of April, so it'll be the last meeting in April.
Right, so I think the end of March, by the end of March, I'll have a, a full document to share with you.
You, April?
So I just have two questions or things that I, no, I could be wrong, but this could have been tied. I know some of them were two-year goals when you, when we first went through these with you. But where are we or you standing on your school choice information, like people leaving the district goal and the community engagement goal? I just don't see anything that correlates to those mentioned.
The school, the school choice was, that's a lot attached to the climate.
Okay, so that's under climate.
Yep.
Okay.
And discipline. I would say that those were the two, two areas that, when we looked at why people were leaving, were the most impactful.
So by focusing on those two as goals, you're hoping that it will change the outcome of the school choice, or people leaving the district will-
Would lessen that.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then the community engagement?
Community engagement, we, we talked about us meeting again. Remember, we had that subcommittee? Now that you mention that.
I think we, I don't think the subcommittee ever got off the ground.
Well, we did, last year we did the-
For the website.
We did the website.
That was the only-
And then we talked about the Communications Subcommittee to develop a District Perception Focus Group. I'm looking at the-
Right.
So we'll have to, we have to get that group together.
We did the alumni-
Right.
-spotlights, and we, you know, reached out to-
But the, the, it's dried up. The responses coming in have really dried up.
Right. But I'm just saying that that was this year.
That was part of it, yeah. Beginning of this year.
Right. But I'm just saying, like, the continued-
And part of that is, and I'm gonna have to thank the people to my right, so the PR firm, so if, remember from the-
MASU Conference?
Yes. So I've been working with Kristen and it's JGPR.
They work great.
Right. And we're, we're, I had to get quotes from other groups, and we've been looking at the contract and what's the best way to go forward. So hopefully we'll have them on board soon. And I think that that's gonna address a lot, that there's certain pieces to the relationship with them that we're gonna have, you know, they're gonna put together six pieces of press releases or public type of relations documents that we'll be able to send out or give to the newspaper, put on the website every month, and they're gonna help us with, you know, some other things if there are, you know, any crises that come up that, that I have to manage, that they're gonna help to, to get the messaging out to the community. So that's gonna be a big piece of that.
Could I possibly suggest something to look at also, maybe? There's a platform called SMORE. I don't know if you've ever seen it. S-M-O-R-E.
I've eaten smore.
I'm sure that, but it's a newsletter platform that's relatively inexpensive, I believe, but it looks pretty sharp, and it gets sent out to, to parents. It's being used in the current district that I'm working in right now, and it, it's pretty easy to use, and it just looks good. It might be just worth looking at, anyway, going forward.
Okay. S-M-O-R-E.
S-M-O-R-E. No apostrophe.
You won't forget that.
I was just looking online for the different yearly subscriptions. It didn't seem that expensive, but I could be wrong, but it- It didn't seem that expensive, but I could be wrong, but it, I mean, that's the first thing I just popped up.
Does it have a metric to check? Like open rate? Like click rate? Like if you're sending this to parents, are they opening it? Is it being engaged with?
I don't.
I know some of those, that you can send it, but then you get no data to know if it's.
I don't know that yet. I think you can see how many parents look at it, but, well, how many, how many email clicks you get from it. Veteran move, may I say, to put your mid-cycle goals update at the very last piece of business.
So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any other business? April?
I just want to ask Gisella's input, because I meant to ask it earlier when everyone was here, but it sort of got lost in the shuffle, and just because we have a few minutes. I just wanted to know if she had any thoughts on the IB presentation that was given to us tonight as a current student? What her thoughts are on, one, the presentation as interpreted by the, the woman who conducted it, and your, from personal experience, I'm, I'm guessing, I believe, that you might be in some of the IB classes. So I would just be interested to hear from our student representative, since this is a student-centric, and we are so student-voice driven, I'd love to hear your voice.
And you were interviewed, correct, by Dr. Franklin?
Were you one of the eight students?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. She was in the original report, but go ahead, so.
Thank you for asking. I think my biggest takeaway was hearing that teachers felt like they weren't being supported enough with the IB classes that they're teaching. I think that was not a perspective that I was looking at this from, and I think that showed something interesting. But personally, I am a huge fan of the IB program. I have taken IB, AP, and dual enrollment classes, and I feel as though the IB program has prepared me the most, not even just for college-level classes, but for everyday life. I can confidently say that I would not be sitting here today if I hadn't taken an IB class. I was incredibly nervous to, like, speak in front of anyone ever, and I was accidentally put into an, well, not accidentally, I was put into an IB class when there wasn't enough students for a US politics class, and so it got merged with an IB global politics class. And that class required me to speak and confidently speak and come up with different opinions on topics that felt incredibly nerve-wracking to have an opinion on. And personally, I think the structure of IB classes is unlike any other classes that I've had before, and I just, I wouldn't be looking into what I wanna major in or what I wanna have a career in if it wasn't for these classes. I also think these classes are incredibly holistic. I take, in addition to, like, IB global politics, IB TOK, and IB environmental, they all have, even though they're smaller classes, a lot of the topics carry over, and we look at them in different lights. So we might be talking about a political event happening in the world in global politics, and then we'll talk about the environmental repercussions in IB environmental, and then we'll talk about how the language surrounding this topic can influence our perception on it in IB TOK. And I just have never had an education like that. So one other thing, I really liked what, someone said, what, it's not what you do, but it's what you, it's not what you know, it's what you do with what you know. And I thought IB truly embodies that. Having the engagement activity that I had for my IB global politics, I actually got to make an impact with what I was learning about in class, and it encouraged me to learn more than I ever have. And it encouraged me to learn, not just in school. It truly made me passionate for what I am passionate about today. So overall, I am a huge, huge fan of the IB program. I am friends with people who are doing the full IB diploma program, and they love it. I also would say, I definitely agree that we need more visibility for this program because I know so many students that would have done the full diploma program, and I would have as well if I knew about the full program. But overall, I am a huge, huge fan of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gisella.
No, I just remember you coming even to present with the school council when you were like a freshman, and just seeing your evolution and your confidence and your passion about the things that are important to you, and how you seem to very thoughtfully take input from all sorts of angles of everything that we present and everything that you talk about, even when you're doing your student representative report. So I'm, I'm, it's nice to hear that you can, you attribute a lot of that to those classes. So that's insightful for me, at least. So thank you.
Thank you. On that positive note, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 500. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.